So we are on air. I am calling to order the Special Board of Education meeting. It is Wednesday, August 3rd, 2022. It is 6:01 PM. We are in the Nashville High North Boardroom. Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call?
Sure.
Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
So we just need to do that phone thing.
Are we all in consensus with Jessica calling in? She's on a family vacation and is giving up her time to continue to participate in the meeting. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Sure. Okay.
Objections. Great. Is she alone?
Are you alone in the room and unencumbered by children?
Yes, I am alone in the room. Thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for letting me call in.
Oh, yeah. You're welcome. Okay, so tonight we are talking about the candidates who are, have thrown their hat in for the Board of Education open seat. I have an idea for how we can do this meeting. And I took notes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention Dr. Andre is here and Attorney Bolton is here.
Yes.
Apologies.
Okay. So what I would like to do, because we have 17 people who are interested in assisting us and joining us, I will read off the names just to verify that everybody's still in, well, not everybody's still interested, but we haven't heard any, received any emails from anybody saying that they don't want to do it. So the same 17 people are available. So I'm just going to read down the list. We have Shawanda Daniels-Williams, Roger Doucette, Susan Elberger, George Farrington, Kevin Flynn, Justine Gregonis, Steve Gutler, Alicia Houston, Rob Johnson, Joseph McIntyre, Dorothy Oden, Colin Principay, Kirsten Prin, Sean Rogers, Peter Thompson, Rosemary Torres, and Colleen Ward Scott. So we know the names. We heard everybody last week. Hopefully, we all reviewed their emails and what they presented to us in the meeting. What I would like to do to organize the conversation, I don't want us to just throw out nominations because I'd like to have a discussion first. So what I would like to do, I'm going to give everybody three note cards. And if you could put down on each individual note card, one person that is like your top three favorite, like, and then maybe if you're comfortable doing like, this is my first choice, my second choice, and my third choice, I'll bring them back here and correlate them and see if, it's almost like a straw poll. So...
Are we writing all three choices on each card?
On, on one card. So like Jen Bishop, Heather Raymond.
Okay, gotcha.
Sharon Gilio.
How do you know which is first, second, or third?
So just right in like the top corner.
Like, okay.
So ranked choice voting, essentially.
Well, it's to narrow down to hopefully we have, like, I'm hoping to narrow down to maybe like two or three people that we can actually have a full discussion about instead of discussing all 17. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a, if we just wrote down the number as they appear on the list, that would say it might be easier for you to collate if people have the lists or can look on somebody else's.
Does everybody have this list?
Yeah.
Hyphenated names and...
Yeah. Good suggestion.
How can we best take Jess's?
So I've already talked to her about this and said we were going to be doing this. So when I announced it, she is going to text me what her choices are, and then I will write her stuff on this list, and then we'll take a couple of minutes and I'll go through it and organize it. And then I'll come back to the table and be like, all right, so we have a, you know, a clear person who we all agree on, or it looks like we have two or three people that, you know, are in a really tight race. Okay? The only thing is Jessica has, can you hear me, Jess?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So you have an Android and I have an iPhone. So sometimes I don't get your text messages when we're in here because I don't have enough service to get an outside of iMessage text. So if you want to, yeah, Jess, do you think you can email it to me really quickly?
Sure, I can, I can do that.
Okay.
I do think that I would be more in favor of making, just for the record, I think making a motion might be smoother, but I respect your process, Madam President.
Yeah, no, I think, I know, I'm, I haven't come up with a number one choice. I actually want to hear what other people have to say. So I, and I don't know if anybody else is, is in agreement with that or feeling the same way. I would like to hear from the board members where they're, where they're at and what they're thinking because it may change my mind. So I think this is a way to have the discussion. If we just start throwing out nominations, we run the risk of not having that quality conversation. Does that make sense?
We just need one card, right?
No.
I thought we needed three.
Everybody needs three.
And the problem with putting the numbers of the person on the card is then when we put the number of how we are ranking them, they could be the same, it could be misconstrued.
Then you know what? Don't worry about ranking, just put three down.
Oh, just three down?
Yep.
One on each card.
One on each card, no ranking.
Sorry.
Okay?
I got all excited about it.
I'm sorry, Deidre.
Pauline, Christina.
If you do a six, if you do a six or not, just maybe write out the name, I don't know.
Pauline and Christina don't have cards yet.
I know, that's because Heather jumped again.
I'm keeping them. I was trying really hard to be, I don't know, efficient and proactive and...
So we can put who our number one choice is?
I think she just said, no.
Oh, no ranking them.
Yeah.
Just three people we want.
Yeah.
I just want to...
Okay.
Keep all the colors.
I'm having so much trouble doing this, but...
I just don't want you guys to feel like you have to do something. Okay. Then once you've written them down, just...
Do you want me to do the writing on the board or do you want to have Reagan do it?
No, let's just, let's just get them all back first. If there's a clear frontrunner, if we, if we've all thrown in the same one, the decision's
Oh, I'm writing names. Sorry. Is this supposed to be anonymous? Notable.
Okay, so this is going to take a minute, obviously. So...
Talk amongst yourselves.
On microphones?
No, I'm kidding. That was in SNL, remember? Talk about butter. Come on. You can't be the only one who stayed up late.
You have to get the clamp first.
What?
I'm verklempt.
Yeah.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Who, that was Austin, not Austin Powers, Mike Myers.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So while you're collating those, can I, can I say something?
Yeah.
Right. So I just wanted to thank everybody who came out. I know we said this at the end of the last meeting, but I think it bears repeating. I found the last week's experience to be really positive for the board and I thought for the community as well. We had a lot of different people from different walks of life with different experiences and different talents that they could bring to the community. And so many people who are already involved in the community, giving back, who wanted to give back even more. And I just, I found it, I found it really moving and touching, and I appreciate that everybody came out and did it. I loved that everybody was respectful to each other. I mean, each person came up with their, their perspective and everybody in the audience spontaneously clapped for every single person. And I just thought overall it was a really lovely, lovely meeting, and I was really nervous about it. So it made me very pleased that it was very lovely. But we only have the one seat, and I just would really hope that everybody who put their name in here remembers that feeling of wanting to continue to give back and gets themselves together to get their petitions and get on the ballot in the fall. Because next year, we will have five seats open on the board. And so if we had, you know, the number of choices we had tonight, it would be a really, really good election and a really powerful force for our community. So thank you all. I can make more words, but that's all I've got.
See, tonight was the meeting I was worried about. Last week, I wasn't worried at all, getting to listen to everyone speak. It's, it's tonight that has had me stressed out all weekend because the last thing I think any of us want to do is hurt someone's feelings or say things negatively publicly. And, you know, we all want what's best for the community and the kids. And, I mean, I honestly was blown away by the amount of people that we had come out that, like you said, just want to keep giving back. It's mind blowing, so...
May I offer them some of my Starbucks or candy? Since I can't...
Thank you.
Whoever brought us candy, thank you. You are wonderful and I appreciate you. And if it was a candidate...
It's over here. It's over here.
Oh. Madam President, you are wonderful for bringing snacks. Here I was thinking somebody was going to get a free vote.
No.
Candidates can't do that.
Yeah, I can bribe you guys, they can't. Okay, so I'm just waiting for Jessica's, not waiting for Jessica's...
Throw it out there.
Oh, I just had a procedural question. I was looking at...
I sent you, Jen, I sent you an email.
Yep. My iPad died. This has been my day, guys.
I was just trying to find out whether...
I don't often complain.
The vote on this particular issue, election, could be, could be, what's the word? Not, secret ballot. So I went, I was reading 91, RSA 91A2, and at the very end, if I read it correctly, it says, except for town meetings, school district meetings, and elections, no vote while an open session may be taken by secret ballot.
That's what it says.
Right. So we'll, we'll write down what we've got there, or do you want us to, everybody to say who they vote, who they put on the cards?
No, I can, I'm just going to read through. I correlated all of them, so I'm just going to read through. There, there's definitely a pattern here.
It was a...
I just was wondering if, if, I'm not saying I want it to be done secret ballot, but I just, we could.
I think as long as the final vote is taken and someone gets five votes, that, that'll be fine.
Right. So out of everybody who, it was me. I know, some people continue doing the rank.
I know.
Okay. So all of us have submitted our top three choices. So we should have five, six, seven, eight.
Wait, I don't know. Where do mine?
You wrote them on the other side of the card when everybody was like, blank.
I was like, that's not the right answer.
Sorry. Oh, everyone's got to do it differently, huh? Trying to make it organized. I'm kidding, I'm teasing Heather.
Well, we weren't told whether to use the line side or the blank side, just to be fair.
That's right, our teacher didn't instruct us.
I just, I went with no lines. Is that?
That's what I did too.
No, I didn't.
You did.
I can't write up something without lines.
You want to double check, but what I have is, out of everybody who has put their hat in the ring, we have three votes for Shawanda Daniel-Williams, two for Justine Gregonis. This is everybody submitted three, so we're just narrowing down the top ones. Two for Justine Gregonis, two for Alicia Houston, three for Joseph McIntyre, six for Dorothy Oden, one for Colin Principay, two for Kirsten Prin, one for Peter Thompson, and three for Rosemary Torres.
Could you just repeat that?
Yep.
That's why I was saying we should just write the names up.
Or, yeah, whatever. I just didn't get them all.
So Shawanda got three note cards. Justine Gregonis got two note cards. Alicia Houston got two note cards. Joseph McIntyre got three note cards. Dor, Dorothy, Dorothy Oden got six note cards. Colin Principay got one note card. Kirsten Prin got two note cards. Peter Thompson got one note card, and Rosemary Torres got three note cards. So...
And that counts, Jessica's, right?
Yep.
Okay. I was like, that's different than what I have here.
So if we were to narrow down the top three, it looks like...
Doesn't that add to 24?
What?
Does that add to 24?
That's, that was my question.
Because I lost track, but I didn't think you did.
Yeah, you're missing some.
Twenty-three.
She's Louise, guys. I get 23. Did you get 23?
No, I got 25.
So two for Alicia.
Maybe my math is off.
No, I got 23 too.
Yeah, I got 23.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
Did everybody give three names?
The teacher in here was showing up.
16, 17, 18, 18, 20, 21.
22, 23, 24.
Okay.
But the numbers of, the numbers aren't, each person gets.
Right.
All right.
Oh, my gosh. Because we only got 23 of them.
Okay, let's do it again.
Peter Thompson.
Has, we'll tell, we'll do tally votes.
One.
Yep.
Rosemary Torres, I have two.
Yep.
Oh, two?
I thought you said three.
No, three, because Jessica's.
Oh, sorry.
Let me write hers down.
Three.
Sorry, Jessica, so much for secret ballot.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. All right, real quick, and I'll put it in with the others.
I'm actually super pleasantly surprised, though, by the names. If anyone wants more words to fill blank space.
Okay. Number seven, Justine Gregonis, I have one.
I thought you said two before.
She's counting them out.
Wait, 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 I'm counting them. Two for Justine Gregonis. Kirsten Prin. One, two, three for Joseph McIntyre.
Hmm.
One, two, three, four, five, six for Dottie Oden.
Yep.
One, two, three for Shawanda Daniels-Williams. One for Colin Principay. Who's number 16?
Kirsten Prin.
Kirsten Prin, so two more for...
Three for Kirsten.
Yep, so three total for Kirsten.
Oh, three. Okay, then that makes it up.
There was a missing vote.
There it is.
That adds to 22.
And two for Alicia Houston.
Okay.
That makes 24.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So the bigger piles, so Dottie has six. I'm just cutting them down now. Six, who were the others that had three?
Shawanda. Shawanda Daniels-Williams.
Kirsten and Rosemary.
And Joseph McIntyre.
And Joseph McIntyre.
And Joseph.
And Justine Fortney-Gregonis has two.
Okay.
Who's this? Kirsten Prin.
Okay.
Two, two, one, one.
Okay, so this is where kind of the... This is so hard with all you guys here because you are all so great. Really stinks, man. So the next thing, I did do some research on how boards make, you know, straw votes, and there was a way of doing kind of a rank order without going through and doing the whole nomination. But do we think that we can have a discussion about five people or do we need to narrow it down? Because we have six, one person with six note cards. I don't know if that's the first choice for everybody. And then we have these other three, which again, I don't know if they're the first choice for everybody else. Do we want to have a discussion about five or do we want to narrow it down more?
I think it's only fair that we start with the five since the four of them all got the same number.
That's what I was thinking too.
Yeah.
I was really hoping it was going to be like five and six or like two people with six, but in true, our board fashion, we run the gamut, which is fantastic, which is why we know when we make decisions that we're coming at it from all sides. It's a pain in the butt to listen to, but I think we all can sleep at night knowing that we've done our due diligence. Okay. Does anybody want to open up the discussion with...
I just had a quick question.
Can you list off who right now is on the table?
So Dottie Oden, Rosemary Torres, Shawanda Daniels-Williams, and Joseph McIntyre.
And Kirsten Prin.
Kirsten Prin, sorry.
My question is that when we left the meeting last week, some people had wanted the ability to ask some of the candidates more questions. I have not seen any emails this whole week with responses to questions that were asked to the candidates. Did anyone actually ask them questions? I did not.
I had spoken with Mr. Farrington to ask him a few questions, but he's no longer in the contention. It's not necessary to share.
I just wanted all the information that was available. Right, because I was the one who made that suggestion, and I listened to the video again. I too spoke with Mr. Farrington yesterday, and he told me he was withdrawing. He withdrew. He told me. He told you the same thing. Yeah.
Okay.
And so I was a little bit surprised, but he had said at his statement that...
But he said, "I'm out."
I'm out.
Was the last thing he said?
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
And I did...
We were hoping that "I'm out" means...
Like peace out.
I'm done with, yeah, peace out, done with the speech.
Like mic drop. Yeah.
Right. But I, but I did have that discussion with him yesterday. I will say one thing about Mr. Farrington. I've known him for a long time, as I know Ms. Oden and knew him back when he was on the board for a long time. I'm not friends with him, been at the opposite side, but one thing he did say when he gave his speech, he talked about the exact thing that Dr. Andre has been talking about that needs to be fixed in this district. And if we don't fix what's in this district now, we're going to start losing the kids more and more, because they were both right on exactly what needs to be fixed in this district. So I'm just saying that that's what sparked me so much about Mr. Farrington, that he knew where we need to go and what needed to be done. So I just want to put that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just, sorry?
Sorry.
I just...
Go ahead.
I'm asking for permission to speak.
You could, yeah, go ahead.
Madam President, I mean, I think there was clearly one winner, and, I mean, that's three quarters of the votes. And I think it's fine if we want to talk about the other four, but it wasn't close. That's all.
True, but again, if, if this was like six people and that was their third pick...
Oh, that's true. That's what, but I'm just saying, I understand, you're saying maybe...
So one of the things that I, that I had looked at about doing is, it's called, it's called zero to five, and it's a straw vote, and you can say how strongly you support something. It's not a vote, but it's an indication of where you stand. So if you have like, you know, if you have a four or a five, we can keep them in the running and then narrow it down to two people. This is really hard to do, guys.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think the aldermen, when they had their position last week, had four people, and then they took those four people and opened the floor to nominations, and alderpeople nominated three of them, and then they voted based on that. So I don't know, I mean, just they opened the floor to nominations, so happened that three got nominated. So I don't know if we want to do that. I want to be very careful with however we decide to move forward, that we stay positive. I don't want to open the floor to someone who's put themselves out there to... So that was... Make it a popularity contest? Like, I very much would like it to be a, I, you know, I nominate this person and here's my reasoning, maybe, or as opposed to, you know, I feel better about this person than that person. That makes me icky.
Are all five of these individuals here?
Two, three.
Two.
Three.
Four.
I would say I think it would be nice if, if it's possible, legal, allowed, if we could bring them forward, maybe ask them a question, tiebreaker.
No.
I don't think Mr. McIntyre is here.
He's right there.
Oh, he is. I'm sorry, I looked right over. Right in front of my face, too.
I know how I want to do it, but I think it's just a waste of time. It's just me overthinking it.
I think Reagan had a...
Go ahead, Reagan.
I was just wondering if, if we could speak in favor of any of the candidates? Because I, I mean, I feel strongly about...
Yeah, so what I wanted to do was open up, open up, if we wanted to open up the discussion with these five people or if we wanted to narrow it down even more. But I think we can start, I think we can speak to the people we have here and start saying who we would, who, you know, is our, I'm, I don't want to use the words like favorite, number one, because if there's a number one, there's always a number two, and I just don't...
Instead of having a discussion where, like Mr. Claffey said, one individual did get double the number, yes, we don't know what the ranking is, but if we put a motion forward now, it could very well end in we have our new member in the next five minutes versus a conversation that could potentially hurt feelings that doesn't need to be had if it's not an actual option. Like, I don't want to leave, keep people in this room hanging by a wire, wondering if they're going to get it if it's just going to most likely go in that one direction.
So let's, so why don't we open the floor to nominations, then? There's a specific language for how the motion has to be worded, right? I wrote down motion to nominate blank for election to the National Board of Ed to complete...
For appointment.
See, that's why it has to be right.
It's an election, it's not an appointment.
Oh, sorry. Heather was right. For election. I knew there was something. All right, motion to nominate, and then I put a blank, for election to the National Board of Education.
I hate to keep doing this, but...
Go, make it right.
It's not a motion, it's just a nomination.
Oh, okay.
Any of you can make a nomination, and once nominations are closed, you take, you take a vote.
Okay. So nomination of blank for election to the National Board of Education to complete a term ending December 31st, 2023.
That's fine.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? So do we have to do all the nominations upfront? Or can we do a nomination and a vote? And then if it doesn't pass, another nomination, another vote?
No.
I'm asking the corporate counsel.
Well, until nominations are closed, any of you can nominate someone. But at any point, one of you could move to close nominations. That is a motion. It's not debatable. You, you then take a vote on whether to close nominations or not. If that passes, nominations are closed, and you take a vote among the persons who have been nominated.
Okay. So with that, then I'll make a motion to open nominations. Is that acceptable?
I just wondered, you said that we might make, we might be able to make a statement as to why we're nominating someone, but if we're just going right into the nominations, then that excludes that ability. No, so I could, if I wanted to nominate someone, I could before doing it or after state why I chose to nominate that person. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
All right, so the motion is to open nominations.
I'll second it.
It has to be roll call because Ms. Brown is on the phone. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
So we are open for nominations. Ms. Gilio has been ready to go for weeks.
Yeah, well, no, no, actually only for hours probably. Okay. So I would like to nominate Dottie Oden and my, for this empty, whatever.
For the language. Nomination of Dottie Oden for election to the National BOE to complete a term ending 12/31.
All of that, yes. And my reasoning behind that, there are a couple of reasons. One is that there's a learning curve in joining this board. It took me longer than maybe a lot of people to kind of get, get with it and understand all the intricacies of it. And unless the candidates have been watching every single meeting we've been having or attending meetings and paying attention, they're going to have more to learn when they come on board. And it's a short period of time. It's about a year and a half. It's not like for three and a half years. I just feel that by nominating Dottie Oden, she's most recently served on the board. She can just sit back down and, and kind of just join in. She's only been gone a while. And I am grateful to everyone else who's expressed an interest and I hope most of you will consider running one against me in a year and a half. Thank you. Is that okay?
Does it need to be seconded?
No.
Not a motion.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations? Ms. Lampier?
So I wanted to nominate Kirsten Prin and Kirsten's qualifications speak for themselves, we all heard. She's a veteran teacher with tons of experience. So the reason I want to, I don't really know Kirsten, well, I've met her for about three minutes, two or three times. But, but a year ago, as the election season began, our board was in a very different place. We all remember how contentious some of those meetings were. It was clear that the election of 2021 would be an exceptionally important one for the future of the Board of Education. In that atmosphere, four of us decided to run as a group because we hoped to fill all of the seats that would be open. Just a few weeks later, I met Kirsten for the first time. She was committed to running as well. She was super excited. She had gathered all of her signatures to be on the ballot. But we already had four people and we were concerned that if the vote was split, maybe none of us would get elected, maybe two or one or whatever. So we, we talked to Kirsten and we asked her if she would step back. So Kirsten made the difficult choice to put her plans on hold. The health of the Nashua School District and our Board of Education was more important than her own desire to be elected. Kirsten's temperament, her experience and her education will all make her an excellent addition to our board. More importantly, she has already demonstrated that for her, the needs of the district will always come first. And that is what makes me so confident that she is the right person to fill the seat.
Thank you. Any other nominations? I move to close nominations.
Second.
Thank you. One second. Kind of making my own thing here.
Ms. Darling, that was you who seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, by roll call on the motion to close nominations. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So I. What is the, the formal wording that we're supposed to use to? I know, I'm trying to do everything perfectly.
You do a roll call and each person announces their, their vote for one of the two nominees.
Okay.
Should we go around?
Yep. Just let me write it down, because.
Pardon?
I think it's roll call, vote by name.
Yeah, I know, I'm writing everyone's name so I can write the name that they say next to it. Does that make sense? But I wanted Mr. Claffey.
Sorry, ready?
Yeah.
Earlier I asked about secret ballot.
Yep.
And I know because we have a phone call, I just, can I make a motion that we do this by secret ballot? Excuse me. Oh, hi.
I don't recommend that.
No peanut gallery comments, please.
Could I ask why you don't recommend? Because my thought process being if they don't know who voted yes, who voted no for each person, it would probably be easier to develop a relationship with people once they're on the board.
Well, basically the provision that Mr. Claffey read earlier about the right to know law deals with school district meetings, town meetings and town elections, by which you can have secret ballots. Otherwise, it prohibits secret ballots.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, roll call order.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll start over here, Ms. Darling.
When do I get to not be number one anymore?
Next year. Will we pull numbers from our hat again?
I'm excited for that day. I'm going to go with Dottie.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
Dottie Oden.
Ms. Lampier? Wait, wait, no, roll call order. Mr. Claffey?
Kirsten Prin.
Ms. Gilio?
Dottie Oden.
I'm going to go for Dottie Oden as well. Okay, Ms. Lampier?
Kirsten Prin.
Okay. Ms. Brown?
Dottie Oden.
Okay, and Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Oden.
Okay. So that makes it six to two for Ms. Oden. So congratulations, Ms. Oden.
And also, Mr. Bolton's here to swear in right now, right?
I can do that.
I say, are you ready to be sworn in right this second?
Yeah. I, I do really want to thank everybody for putting their name out here and putting themselves out here to do this. I really hope everybody continues to want to run in the future. Every single person here had something amazing to offer. As you can see, this was not, we, we thought about this. This wasn't, you know, pulled out of a hat. So we, we respect you, we thank you and we hope that you, you try again.
Yep. And can I just say, I mean, I think for me, Ms. Gilio's reasoning was important to me, but also the fact that Ms. Oden said she wouldn't run again. Like this is it, this was a fill-in to help us out and then give everybody else the same equal chance in the poll.
Can I just also add, like there are three people that are in the audience right now that I really, 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 please, please run in a year and a half because our board needs you. And if I could like make more seats, I'm not going to say I would kick anyone off, of course, but like if I could make more seats, I, please, please run, we need you.
Okay, let's swear, Ms. Oden, and we got work to do.
I solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties that are incumbent upon you as the Education according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the City.
Help yourself to chocolate, Starburst. An orange for.
I say, we got a seat for you.
The appearance of health. Yeah, sit on down.
Would you like me to sit?
Open seat that has candy. Yeah.
I'm diabetic.
But you're so sweet.
An open seat that has water.
Right. Okay, so I don't think we have anything else to discuss, so I move to adjourn.
Second. Sorry. No, go ahead, Paula. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So on the motion to adjourn, we have to do it by roll call.
Ms. Darling?
Yes, please.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Does Ms. Oden get to vote?
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Okay.
Your first vote back on the board.
And it's to adjourn.
All right, we are adjourned at 6:39.